Yeah.
Yeah.
It should be.
Yeah. For getting your feet, try to get up and get feet down.
It's halfway or something.
Should be last, oh yes.
I know the, the road projects are the thing.
Never any.
And those are the ones that are a big dollar.
Yeah.
Like if you, if we had no road projects.
Do it again.
We could put those funds into our departments.
Oh, okay.
You know, we're talking ten dollars here and they're all, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or more. We could fund those in our capital. Really, it's the, it's the infrastructure projects that are really. The only, the question I have is, and I wanted to ask you.
Oh, sit around. Oh, no, she's tired.
Do we have any money in our fifth account?
I don't get to sit around.
We do have a little bit.
We have. But I don't get to sit around, I have so much work to do and it's like, oh my.
I'm sure there's projects that we can spend that consult.
Not anymore. Well, no, I should take that back just a little bit, most of it's on the phone. Just to go over certain things with customers and stuff, you know, you're always gonna have these.
So we're probably gonna receive something. I mean, we might have a lot, but we might have fifty dollars.
That'll do the, this spring, the blockways training.
I don't know if that qualifies, but I do believe one item that they mentioned qualified would be the county road maybe.
Well, well, look at the, the.
Could be, at least a few more months.
If you said, uh, you already know one that will qualify for sure.
It just happens certain times of the year.
That's seventy-five.
Yeah, it's.
So even if we not.
But it's good, it's a good relationship, so I'm, you know, the guys feel confident and they're comfortable calling me and asking instead of screwing up.
We're getting better.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're doing good.
Yeah, it really was a perfect match.
We gotta get CD money, that's what we got.
Yeah.
Ray, did you send out an email with the committee digs?
No, I, I wanted to confer.
Yeah, yeah, that was. You don't realize till it's finally like, wow. Cause at first you feel like, oh, just on vacation, there was the holidays and, you know, it's like, okay. Now it's like reality, it's like, wow, this is nice.
For next year?
This year, twenty twenty-five.
Well, yeah, that's why I'm sorry, yeah.
Second date, November, I think it's eleven or twelve, whatever, November eleventh, that's for the state.
Oh.
So. So without me being there, it's no, it doesn't matter.
Moving it to Wednesday.
That's fine, just as long as I know, so I can, I'll get the days off that I need.
Okay, so then, well, I'll propose that to the mayor and then I can get the meeting.
Okay.
Didn't want to cancel.
Right, right.
Don't sort of get chips.
Yeah, that's a, that's a rough time.
I'm so excited, so I went down.
So I'll, I'll run it by you.
Yeah, I just need to know and then.
I said, all right, don't be very happy, so they didn't want my day. They, yeah, they just wanted us, they wanted those, I had to bottom of the pile thirty years, so that's who they wanted.
Right, right, right.
I'm like, killing you.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's gonna.
You all arms and legs there.
You don't get that, that's what looks, looks good in their soul. So, it's sold. Yeah, it was, uh, it was interesting.
It's just another phase of life.
Yeah.
All right, everybody set?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting of the village of Walton Hills of Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, at seven twenty P. M. We're starting our committee of the whole meeting. A little later, we did have a finance committee meeting with the complete finance department, along with myself, the mayor, Melissa Sandrick, the fiscal clerk. And of course, can't do it without Melissa and Nikki, and Nikki, the fiscal officer, Nicole Sell. So, we had a separate meeting now, we're into the committee of the whole, so. But a good meeting, and it was worth extending it past the seven o'clock time. So, so I'd like to start this meeting. First order of businesses going, second order of businesses, pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Nikki, you wanted to roll call.
Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Here.
Councilman Whedon?
Present.
Okay, all of council here this evening, along with our law director, John Montello, our fiscal officer, Nicole Sell, and our fiscal clerk, Melissa Sandrick. I'd like to welcome everybody, the residents also that are watching our live stream, or any non-residents that are watching the live stream, and we are also taping it in dispatch, recording it. Okay? Any comments to any, to any, related to any agenda items from any residents that are here or watching the live stream? And you can also comment as we go through the meeting. Okay? First, item five, that's legislation, we did talk about it last week at our other COW meeting, our first COW meeting, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one, and NOPEC energized community grant. I think that was pretty straightforward, I don't remember any questions anybody had related to that, unless anybody has something that. Okay? I'd like to put that on there, on for suspension, if everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Then we had item B, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two, amending the twenty twenty-five appropriations, ending the budget. I know we spent some time with that. I don't think there was really anything related to that that came out of that, any questions, any questions at this time? Okay, is everybody comfortable with putting that on for suspension too?
Yes.
Okay. Then we have ordinance twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-five dash three, the ODOT preliminary legislation. I know there was also a packet that Joe put together, Joe Gelati, our village engineer, from Shogun Valley Engineering. This is for the Northfield sidewalk, it's part of the ODOT agreement, the Ohio Department of Transportation. They have awarded the village previously a total of one million five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and five, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. One million five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and. What is that, four, two, what did that number be? Four hundred and twenty-five dollars, right? For the Northfield Road installation project. Okay, this kind of explains it, I know Joe has said to us, it is a hundred percent. At the end of the project, we will be reimbursed a hundred percent, there will be no out of money, but we will have to pay for some things, Nikki, correct, and then wait for a reimbursement, is that?
Correct.
Correct? Did you want to add anything to that, or?
No.
Okay, but this is just part of, Joe kind of explains it here. It is, you know, he puts, this group reflects the dollar amounts awarded to the village, and is such, it is recommended the village pass the required legislation, allowing the mayor to sign this agreement and to allow this important safety project to continue to move forward. It's just gonna be one of many things that will probably move forward, ODOT part of the process to be able, we've been awarded those funds, but to receive those funds, and they're going to manage that project. And they lay the project out, Joe and Rob will work with them, but they're, it's, it ends up being kind of their project, you know, it's a joint project with us. I think it's something that's, I know this council was concerned about as the administration, due to some things, some fatalities that we have had. And I think this is really a, a great move going forward. It's also gonna provide some safety, it's gonna provide a lot of safety, but also a place for people to wait for public transportation and not be out on the grass, you know.
Or the streets.
Or the street, right, they'll be off the road, which I don't think we can put a price on any of that. You know, it's just, it's sad that we've had some things, not only in our community, but in, in some of the neighboring communities. Was there anything else that anybody wanted on that, or any concerns?
Mayor Colgar?
Yes.
I just had a question regarding the bidding process, who is, who, who bids, does ODOT bid this project, or will the village of Walton Hills bid the project?
I would think, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
I would think the village would bid.
But we can find that out, I can find that out from Joe.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a simple question, I remember it being a very large dollar amount, but I thought it was only one side of the road, and now with reading these, it's both sides of the road. That didn't increase it, double it? No? It was always both sides?
Yeah, when we, we talked about it originally, we. Put, I don't, I can't remember if we put in for the project, or that was what we wanted to do, and then ODOT came back and said, it didn't meet how they felt the safety requirements. They basically told us that.
They're gonna do what they want.
We're in with you, but we'd like, we're gonna tell you how, how we see and how we think it is the safest way to do it. And where those crossings should be, where those sidewalks should be. And that's fine, because that's, that's their specialty, that's what they do. And safety is their, their concern, just like, like us.
Mr. Mayor, I, when we first talked about it, there was some talk of it only being on one side of the road.
That is correct.
At about a million dollars, so it's probably because they're gonna have all the equipment and that there, that there's not a, another double.
Double, okay.
You know, because all of the stuff's gonna be there, it's just gonna be the material, okay, that would increase.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a, out of the box question here, who maintains that? Like in the winter time?
The sidewalk?
Yeah, because it's a state road, I've, just a question.
Yeah, that, that's been discussion on that, and we haven't, that hasn't been totally clarified.
Yeah, it's, it's a long way off, but just, just a thought.
But I, I think with that said, not to put, it's really not gonna put more on the infrastructure committee, but I think that's a good thing to have Joe bring some preliminary plans and maybe share that in the infrastructure committee and also with council. That would, and that way, you can see exactly whatever he has, where it is going. That would, you know, give us a good idea. I don't know how much they have, when we first talked, it was really preliminary, and they were still talking about where, so let me, but that would be, this would be a good thing on the infrastructure committee too. Kind of get, who's gonna, you know, be, you know, who's gonna be accepting the bids, just the whole project, get a, a good outline of the project. Cause now we're really, it's starting to, it's gonna ramp up this year, cause if they started, you know, in the summer of twenty-six, all the planning has to go in place, because they have to obtain those right of ways, there's just a lot there. You know, to actually start doing the work, there's a lot of preliminary stuff.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, and when I was reading this, the, these documents, and I'm just gonna throw it out, out there, and it's something too for the infrastructure committee to talk to Mr. Gelati about. This does have us signing this contract, which basically states that we assume all financial responsibility for the project, to pay for the project. And as we've seen over the many years, Shogun Valley is, this probably is not their first, second, or third rodeo at doing this type of work with ODOT. This is a large sum of money for us, one point five million dollars, and I'm sure they have this specked out to what that, that grant is. My questions in my own head as I'm reading this, since we're signing this contract and basically putting the cart before the horse here, saying we're responsible without actually knowing what the final, or, you know, what the bidding process is and what these things are gonna come in as bid at. Do we have any, you know, what are, I'm sure there's no guarantees, but what, what safeguards do we have for this not running over that one point five million dollar mark? And, and then we're on the hook for some of that, and again, I'm sure they're the experts at this, and they have this nailed down, but as a novice at all of this, I would, I would like Mr. Gelati, and that's something that he can do at, at the infrastructure meeting, and we can relay that information to everybody. What those stopgaps are and what, what those things, and also it does say in the documents here that, that if we want anything over and above what the project, what ODOT is doing, then of course we pay for that on our own. So, is there anything we want over and above what ODOT is providing? I don't have an answer to that, and I don't know what that would even be, but there might be something in conversations with Mr. Gelati that we may wanna consider at that time.
John, did you want to add anything to that?
I was just gonna say, there are some stopgaps in the. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's some stopgap, the total project is estimated to be at, you probably all read this, one, one million seven hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred dollars, and ninety percent of that will be reimbursed to us, which I believe is the number on the front here, the one thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and four hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then anything above that would be our responsibility, so if it comes in underbid, we may have no obligation, but if it comes in overbid, we do have a financial obligation.
Well, we'll have to, because Mr. Gelati in one memo he states differently, so that there, then what's here, I think, I think what we should do, what I'd like to do, is that, cause Joe has no, had no problem, I said, let's, think, why not, I'm gonna invite him to the council meeting. And then we can have discussion about that, give you time to, John, more time to look at the, the contract too, and have Joe, you know, come in and, and kind of outline that with us, and I don't, you know, there's no problem with that.
Mayor Colgar?
Yes.
Thank you for that, I'm looking forward to Mr. Gelati being, you know, potentially being with us, uh, cause, you know, one thing it does say, you know, preliminary legislation, and we, and we're using the words contract, so I, I don't know if preliminary legislation means that there will be a second document down the road to permanently, you know, memorialize this agreement. And, you know, and the one item that, the one item that I, I hope Mr. Gelati can elaborate on as well, goes back to Mr. Nielsen's question, and that's section six, where it does kind of talk about the maintenance aspect, being the responsibility of the local public agency, i.e. Walton Hills. So, yeah, I look forward, hopefully he can be with us to kind of walk us through this a little further.
We will make that happen, I'll talk to Joe, unless for some reason he wouldn't be able to be here, but I'm sure he will be able to, cause I had intendedly told him that we might need your presence too. So, but it's good, cause those are what we want, we're getting these questions out, it makes it easy for me to tell him what we're looking for, and then he become well prepared for it. So, it's a big project, you know, so it's, it's nothing wrong with crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, you know. But it's a good project, it's, it's, I think we're all happy, it's, it's actually going to do what we've wanted to do for a long time, it's gonna help clean up that corridor, it just naturally is gonna help clean up that corridor. I put no sidewalks.
Mr. Mayor, as you said, that this is a very good grant we got, thank, thank God we got this grant for this, because as you said, the safety aspect of this alone, just, you can't put a price on that.
No, no, it's. It's hard to, you know. People waiting there for the bus, they're not seen, walking across the street, and things happen. So, we already started the sidewalk with the new project, hopefully that can, the other community, our neighboring community continues that, to join theirs, that would help there too, because those employees do walk from that site down to Alexander Road, so. So I'll ask Joe to be here, we wanna know about the, the maintenance, the bidding process, and also if there is other parts of the contract that are coming down, is, what is our financial responsibility total? Is there anything hidden, what is it, are we on the hook for that, so I, I got it. Those, that's summing it up pretty good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any questions from anybody watching live stream, or our one resident? Mr. Alexander? Okay, then I'll move on. And I'll have John talk a little bit about that, we have resolution, item B, resolution twenty twenty-five dash six, accepting the national opiate settlement, creating a special revenue fund. I know, what did we do here, Nikki? What did I miss?
You were right here.
No, I know, but why is this here again?
That should have been up there.
Yeah, that's okay. I missed that, why we, you know, as much as we looked at it. I know we received, Mr. Montello has been working with Nikki and Melissa and Marty Mason, our prosecutor, to do with the, the settlement money. It talks about the uses, I guess we will receive two to three dis- dis- disbursements each year over the course of the next seven years, so those two to three will be that same amount? Is that what we gather, Nikki and John and Melissa? I know we talked a little bit about it.
Our total was about seven thousand and two dollars, that would be dispersed, I'm not sure if that's over three payments, or if it's.
I, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, I don't know for sure, but I would, I think it's gonna vary each year on what's paid into the fund, so I don't think it's gonna be the same amount every time, I think it'll vary according to the formula that they have come up with, so I can't guarantee how much it's going to be, but in the memo, Marty Mason was involved with the settlement, and he dictates, you know, he gave us examples of what we could use it for. It's basically treatment, education, early intervention and crisis support.
Training.
Training.
Narcams.
Recovery support, we don't have a lot of staff to, to implement that, but perhaps we could come up with some creative ways to, to maybe down at the rec department, have some program about it, you know, that we could have some education down there, somebody come in and speak, I, I was, I was thinking, I'm getting, but something along those lines.
And that certainly, certainly wouldn't be a bad thing.
No.
To have a public program, because. Nobody is exempt, young, old. From the, from opiate addiction, it can happen to any of us, so to have some kind of training and certainly wouldn't be bad. So I think that kind of sums it, is everybody pretty comfortable with that? I know we talked quite a bit about it last week, Nikki's getting pretty familiar that, and Melissa, that they're gonna have a separate fund for, getting the legalities of it, and then once that money is in, we'll have to look how we can spend it. So, I, I think it's great that we're receiving some of that to help educate and use some of that to avoid those addictions, so. All right, is everybody okay with me putting that on for suspension? Okay. Any questions from any audience or anybody watching the live stream relating to that? Then we have item six, other business, discussion of economic development consulting agreement, Mr. Jordan. I did, Nikki did. Kind of, Nikki, you wanna kind of just talk about that a little bit, cause you got the numbers. We, I know one of the questions from council, Mr. Jordan, we paid him a retaining fee. And how many hours is that, Nikki?
That covers twenty-five hours.
That covers twenty-five hours a month, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then he charges beyond the twenty-five hours, he charges a fee, and, and so he was asking to increase his yearly retainer plus the hourly rate. And. He, from initial, probably for how many years did we figure he didn't charge, he wasn't, it wasn't really to the last year and a half that he's gone over, he's figured it pretty well, go ahead, Nikki, you looked that up, we didn't pay.
He just said that the last bills, and this was from December of twenty twenty-three, were the only time I ever charged above my retainer since twenty fourteen. But he said, fortunately, it looks like another large development may be on the horizon, so it looks like he, in December of twenty twenty-four, was the first time he had charged above his retainer.
Right.
Due to the projects going on.
Right. And I know, also asked his. Invoice, it gives his hours, it doesn't give a, a total detail, but he said that he, he has no problem, so moving forward, I'm gonna ask him for that, but if he wanted the back, he keeps a pretty good track of that. I do know, and, and you know, we're probably gonna see it again, is, which is okay, is, we have, we spent a lot of time, you know, we did two CR, two CRA agreements in twenty twenty-four, the two projects, and that, we spent a lot of time, a lot of that is phone calls. You know, we, we've done some in person, but a lot of it is team meetings, Nikki's been part of them, so she, she knows, and John, and of course, Mr. Jordan is part of those. But we've been very successful, so from my standpoint, I have no, I have no problem with the increase, I, I would ask for council support. I thought about it long and hard, that. He's a valuable part of the team. And I value him being there, and I, I just want to express to, to the village. We've been, and you guys are part of it, the council's part of it and administration, we've been very successful so far, with thing, with coming up with good terms for both. The tenants there and us, and we're having good negotiations with the school system, we did well in this council with Cardinal Health, we're going to receive all the funds for the first five years, and that's gonna help the village, just what we're talking about with some of these infrastructure projects. And his knowledge with those CRA agreements, and of course, we have outside council too, I mean, you, you, we paid a lot for outside council to be part of that, they do draw up those CRA. for outside council to be part of that, they do draw up those CRA agreements, um, but we have, and we, we pay brick and grating, um, quite a bit, but we're dealing with very professional, um, tenants and owners there, who, they're coming to the table with the best, and we wanna come to the table with the best. So I, that's just kinda where I'm at, I, I know everybody has a feel, Tom has no problem, coming to a meeting too, if there's any questions, he could come next week too, and this doesn't have to, if you wanna put it on for the first reading, or you wanna wait to talk to Tom, there's no, I have no legislation for it, and so that's, if there's all, you know, still questions or whatever, we can get into next month, just how everybody feels, you know?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yet, you know, dealing with Mr. Jordan, uh, through the Ford, uh, Innovation East, uh, he's, I, I feel he's been tremendous, I mean, it, he's, his value to this village is, uh, I, I feel that he's not only taught me, I'm sure that, that all of us have learned, uh, a lot from, from listening to him and dealing with him over the years, uh, the, uh, one of the big things I, I personally got from it is, is understanding the TIP, I mean, he is, uh, he's explained it probably better than, uh, I think anybody could, and I know he's helped with the, with the JED over the years, and I know he's been valuable to you, and he's, he's valuable to the village, I, uh, I really respect his knowledge of, of dealing with, with these companies and these businesses like he has, so, uh, yeah, I, I, I'm full support of, uh, of, uh, Mr. Jordan and keeping him at our side.
Why don't, um, how does, how does council feel about this? Is if everybody's okay, we can put, if you're okay with this, or we can wait, put legislation together, okay, um, can always do it first reading and, and talk about it, I know a lot of times, sometimes we feel a little more comfortable maybe putting a reading or so on it, if that's okay, or if you want me to, to wait on the legislation, it, there's, uh, no, no problem. But in today, just so you, in case any residents are wondering, um, the days of, I know, as mayor, that falls under the title too, doing economic development, but, um, most mayors, most communities either have an economic development person on staff, even the communities our size, they pay somebody, uh, full-time and, and, um, uh, paying them, OPRS, we don't pay Mr. Jordan OPRS, do we?
No.
He's a contractor, so let's say if he was even on staff part-time, with, it would be a lot more, because we'd have to pay an OPRS, um, and, um, it's a position that's not very easy to find either, John will tell you, and, and especially somebody that's good at it, um, we're, we're in a great spot, um, I, I think it's, it's good, it's good that, we're all familiar, we got a good team together, and we're moving in a good direction. So what do you think, you want me to put it on, put legislation together, and then?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that, okay, then, then you have time to look at it, we can do it, if for some reason you wanna do it, uh, next Tuesday, fine, if not, wanna do first reading, that's fine too. And if, would you want me to have Mr. Jordan come in? Probably wouldn't be, I mean,
I don't think so.
No, I don't, okay, okay, if everybody's okay with it, all right.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, for Nicole, uh, what would, uh, the monthly amount be then? Cause I just had this memo, that's the only thing I got.
He, the increase?
The increase is two hundred dollars a month.
Correct.
What would that be, be a total for the month then?
Twenty-seven hundred?
Twenty-seven hundred.
That would be for twenty-five hours?
Yeah, for twenty-five hours.
Have you seen the contract, Brian?
No, I haven't, this is the only thing I have.
It was in your legislation last week.
That's why I didn't see it.
Should've still been in your mailbox.
How many meetings have you missed in your thing, is that probably like your third maybe, or second, not too many? Nobody, that's what, great, nobody here misses.
You wouldn't have wanted to be here last
No, no, we're glad you stayed home. We weren't feeling good work here.
Well, you were still watching, so.
Yeah, he was, he was, he wasn't letting us get off the hook, was he, Jennifer?
It's one twenty-five for the hour, it goes to.
I'm sorry, what?
One twenty-five for the hour.
That's what I thought, one twenty-five per hour. Um, Mr. Mayor, just my two cents here, yeah, well, as far as I'm concerned, we don't need Mr. Jordan here, he's one of the best in the state, very well respected, he's not a, he's not somebody just off the street learning, he's very intimately involved and knowledgeable about the village, he has brought, um, more, uh, economic development to this village than we're, a lot more, uh, percentage-wise, than what, what we're paying out to him to do it. We would be doing the village a horrific disservice by saying, no, we wanna shop around. In my opinion, and, and this is only my opinion, uh, I like Mr. Jordan, but that has nothing to do with it, uh, he could be my very best friend, and if I didn't think he was working out, I wouldn't, I wouldn't rehire him, but he's, uh, he's one of the best in the state, well-respected, he knows what he's doing, um, and we would take ten, fifteen steps backwards, uh, if we were to allow Mr. Uh, Mr. Jordan to leave, um, and this is very, very reasonable for this type of, uh, expertise, uh, even with this increase, so I don't, I don't have any problem with it, and, uh, as the mayor can tell you, all he's gotta do is pick up the phone, I bet if he picked up the phone and called Mr. Jordan now, he'd answer it. So, uh, I, I'm fine with it.
And we, we, we're, chances we're gonna probably have an executive session, um, as I mentioned, next week, uh, there's some items, and, uh, economic develop, he might be here anyways, economic development might be part of it, we, uh, we have a nice thing going on with, uh, another project that's separate from, uh, Ford Innovation East, so that's, that's a good thing. Okay, well, that's what we'll do, John, we'll see what we can get together, and yeah. I don't have any other, anything else under other business, um, I just wanted to let council know, probably have an executive session, um, some employee issues, some pending, maybe some potential litigation, and, um, economic development. So, do anything else that we need, I think, so we were good with the NOPEC, good with the appropriations, the other, uh, the ODOT, we're good with the OBIT, the ODOT is, I just have those, uh, questions for Joe, I'm gonna ask him, see if he can be here, cause he, he just does a, a good job of giving a good presentation for us, and I think this project, and if for some reason he can't make it, we'll get these questions answered, and then, you know, um, I know we'd like to get, we'd like to get that passed, uh, but I have that, and then we just talked about, uh, Mr. Jordan's agreement, anybody else have anything for other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer?
Um, just curious, I had a couple calls, people asking, um, there appears to be a water main break at Walton and Carney, is there any estimated repair? It's been like over a week now.
No, I, I can find that out. Okay, anything else?
Yes, actually, Mr. Mayor, I do, um, I received in my emails today, I would assume, but hate to, that the rest of council did also, the NOPEC Community Connection, and I think it's something important that we should maybe include on our webpage for the residents, uh, the headline is "Upcoming PJM Capacity Charge Increase: Help Your Residents Prepare." PJM is the company, PJM Interconnect, Interconnection, which manages the electric grids for thirteen states, including Ohio, and they recently had a capacity auction that resulted in dramatically higher capacity prices, it's going to mean higher electric bills for all of our, all of the Ohio, and all of the other PJM Interconnection serves, these new prices are gonna start June twenty twenty-five through May of twenty twenty-six, um, there's a lot of things in here about what is capacity, PJM makes sure that when there's high, uh, nee- needs in the summer with air conditioning, in the winter with heat, but they are projecting eight hundred percent increase on those fees for the electric bills, so if you guys didn't read it, read it. And residents, please go and look, um, NOPEC, uh, nopec.org, about capacity charge increases.
Capacity charge increase?
Yeah, it was, it was just today.
I did not, as of this afternoon, I didn't receive that, I'll have to look at the mail.
Yeah, it was just in today's email, I was like, holy moly, eight hundred percent they're talking about, so. Unfortunately, but I think it's important, people will look it up and...
You, you know, uh, we can have Mr. Ramus, uh, you know, we can have him come out too and talk about that.
That would be
Maybe, maybe we'll do that in the first COW meeting of March, yeah.
They do offer in there, you know, use lower wattage bulbs like LEDs, better appliances and stuff, but you can't re-picture your whole entire house.
Mr. Mayor, I did give that information to Mary and asked her if we were, could put it on the website.
There you go.
I don't know if she did or not yet.
Okay, thank you, Nicole.
Well, she won't until she talks to me, so, she'll, I haven't looked at it yet, so, but I'm gonna have, uh, why don't Nikki make that note, we'll maybe bring, uh, him in from NOPEC, and NOPEC can get it right from him.
Right, this isn't, this isn't anything from what it says that NOPEC can control.
Right.
This is a fee that's being passed on to thirteen different states, so.
Cause she would do a very good job of putting it in layman's terms for me and all the rest of us, and, and then we can post, we'll, we'll take a look and see what, cause they, if you have a regular public, they always put a nice publication together that they provide, that we can put it out on our website instead. Okay, very good. Anybody else have anything for all their new business? Any, one resident, or anybody watching the, uh, live stream?
No.
Is the lake ready yet? I wish you'd say yes, uh, I wish winter was over.
Yep, the ice cleared up, so we can skate.
Okay, I, I think we, uh, have it, the only thing is, we'll have an executive session, so put that together, and, um, anybody has anything, like myself, or, uh, council president, Mr. Weeden, or any council members? So?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Spitsnagle?
Yes.
Councilman Whedon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, meeting adjourned, look at that, eight o'clock, all right? We don't do that too often, right on the nose. Yeah.
Yeah.